All right, MJ, can I lead us?
Uh, sure. So let me explain what you have in front of you. Um, it's a progression of where we started to, um, where I am today. Starting, um, the first column obviously is the revised budget from the current year. What the department requested, um, what came to you on the 23rd. Then, um, you did make some adjustments last week. First page doesn't have any, but the ones that you did, you'll see there. Um, and the column called additional department cuts are the 2% or whatever the departments, um, provided me. Um, so, um, bringing the revised budget and the difference at the end, um, is, is the difference between the revised budget of fiscal '25 and your FY '26 revised, uh, budget there. So, um, which translates all the way down to the bottom. So I did hear, um, from almost all departments. As you could well imagine, some of the cuts, um, reductions were hard for some of the smaller departments. You'll see a lot of training off the table, um, you know, place, things like that. But we can certainly look at them.
Does that mean, I mean, I know you, you really, do departments need to answer this? Although to the extent that you're running a department, maybe. Does that mean the training just won't take place or it'll take, it'll proceed in a different way? It managed internally, like, I mean, I mean, is there, if there's external requirements for ongoing training? I presume we're gonna need.
Those we would be, uh, uh, we, we would ensure that the assessor's office has whatever training needed to stay. Uh, you know, the police department, but I'm talking other trainings. Um, you know, additional conferences, uh, in, in my department. Because Darlene is now the new purchasing agent. I have some new trainings for her so that she can learn, you know, in this new role. Those types of things we've taken off the table. Um, required training, we would not remove that. That would be, you know, kicking ourselves, you know? Um, so the training, uh, is just, I'll, I'll call it extra training, but not.
Okay, well, let me, let me address that also for my department, also from an HR department. Such as your HR situation, training is, training I feel is, is very important. We, we need, we need to keep up with, all departments need to keep up with the current trends and what's going on. The problem is, if you look at a department like mine, the smaller departments, I can't cut the printing budget because we have to print labor posters, it's something we have to do. I can't cut, you know, um, the, the subscriptions and dues. We already belong to certain things and expect certain things. The only thing left was training. I mean, to make any kind of cut, that's where it was, the only thing left, and we're gonna cut salaries. We've already discussed the salaries separately. So I think it became the, the lesser of all the evils, that, not that it's evil, but just the only place we could go with it. But I really don't like seeing departments cut training, not just mine, because it's so essential that we keep people abreast of what's going on in their respective departments and their respective fields. Um, I am concerned about that, but, you know, we'll see what you guys need to do.
Without taking on the role that I'm sure you're gonna deal with at the Board of Finance already. So, uh, but I mean, to these, you mentioned subscriptions. I would think that some of the subscriptions, the services and the, uh, associations they were belong to would have some of that same material, now albeit on a self-directed individual basis, as opposed to sending people out, having a seminar and having it directed. I, I get the value of that. But I mean, is it possible to find some of the same information with programs that we're already paying for?
Yeah, I mean, some of, some of it is. And Zoom has opened up a lot of opportunities for people to get certain trainings.
But they still charge for many of the training, even if they're on Zoom.
But to me, I was about to say, but the subscriptions, subscriptions, even if they're online, you know, the, what I'm reading, whether I'm reading a piece of paper or reading it online is the same amount, it's actually, but it just keeps going up anyway because that's what people made money.
Okay.
I, I asked Mary Jane the same question about training. And she did say that if, if, if the total budget of, of a department is $10,000 and one of the lines, like halfway through the year, halfway through the year, it looks like there's gonna be some money left in one of the lines. There is the ability to then do that training without going over budget. You might go over the line, but you don't go over the.
Right, on, on the assumption that you haven't missed that training already the first.
Right, it's still not great, right? But, yes. The money might be there, but the, the training might.
Absolutely. I'm just using training as an example of where we're gonna see.
Yeah.
Um, you know, like Mitch, you know, like it, it, in, in my department, I've cut those types of things as well. Um, as discussed, you know, I put in a 10% increase to the, um, annual audit. We're, we're out to bid right now. It could, it could be five, it could be 10, it could be 20, you know? So I couldn't touch that line item. Um, and again, like other projects, I'm, I'm just bringing forward to you the frustration from the departments, um, which I feel is my role, um, to, to you, that, that that was, um, it's difficult for departments. And, and many of our department heads truly budget exactly what they need to, to come back and take something out, you, you know? Uh, even the police department took out, you know, one of, they were doing two, uh, the baby seat checks, you know, they cut one of those out. You know, it's a public service, it, you, you know? Because that's something, because they could, that, that's, you know what I mean? Um, but, but before we start, I just wanted to, in general, express that, um, you know, people, a- as people pushed back, I pushed back. I said, you, 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 you gotta help me out here. You gotta, we have to do something. The departments that don't have anything are departments that I tried to reach, but didn't get, get anything from. But anyway, but how, I don't, so I don't know how you want to proceed, whether it's department by department or, um.
Well, you had some that you want us to consider specifically, right? You had mentioned earlier that there's some that you want us to relook at.
The, the, the police department is very concerned about, um, the amount of cuts they've had to take from their overtime. Um, just so that you know, you know, at, at 1%, they took out 21,000 and then under 2%, they took an additional 9,000. That additional 9,000 is very, um, problematic for the chief and the chairman of, of, of the, the commission. So, you know, that was one of the things, um, that was of concern from the, the police department. Um, but like I said, most of the departments are just concerned overall. But, um, switching gears just slightly, um, I wanted to, I did ask Becky, um, I have an answer to one of your questions from last time. You, we asked about that $20,000 or, um, amount for the field work. You brought it down to five, that, 15,000. She actually brought it down to 15,000 as well. That was her reduction. But, um, just so you know, um, she says, "This line item accounts for inspections to add value for new construction to the grand list. I also want to add personal property inspections to the list to add money to the grand list for nonfilers, of which we have over 500 accounts, 500 nonfilers. Um, they are essential to add money to the grand list." So that was her answer to that. So we, but she took that 5,000 as well, like, like you guys did. But that was, you did ask that question. I wanted to just bring that back to you.
So the police, that $30,000 in additional cuts, that includes the nine?
Yes. Just the nine, sorry. Overtime.
Oh, okay. And is there anything specific in additional cuts related to savings? How there's another dissection? Can't remember how we left that.
Uh, I believe that might already be in there. Let's see, I have a whole write-up.
We were talking about 25,000.
Yeah, yes, um, but I did get something from him as well. So I, he had known that we had already taken that cut. So his cut was 35,000 and we. Um, so, yeah, so I used his 2% cut. Um, so the replacement salary. So it says, "When added to the reduction, the new detective position, cuts made under the 1% plan, 2% cut, while the reduce, oh, so it's got, uh, see, I forgot, read 1%. Yeah, so it is that, that 35,000, which for that. But you already took 25, so. That's in replacement salary. And I just, so also in the overtime, um, that includes the child safety seat clinics being cut and the citizens' academy being cut, including, um, in that overtime cut. And so 21, the 21,000 of overtime, um, he cut the K-9 program. Our, we know a lot, we aren't gonna be having the K-9. Um, trying to remember, 20, something happened there. So that, so we're, anything related to the K-9 has come out of his budget. Um, uh, so he says, "The administration was informed in January that K-9 jacks must be retired for service. So associated costs for the patrol K-9 program are removed from the budget."
He's not gonna be put down.
Well, we had.
No, 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 no.
Retired.
Okay, right, he's retired.
He's not all the way out.
So.
We had two, right?
At one time.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, so that, that's out. So a lot of the, not a lot, but a, a lot of the line items have, have cuts related to the K-9 program. So that is a legitimate reduction. He just learned that on January 24th, so.
So, so the simple question, we're adding this new position. Are there offsetting reductions? Is there an answer to that?
Yeah, we already took the 25.
We did, so, so is that what, is that the reduction?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
That's, and, and you put that out as replacement salary.
Replacement salaries, correct, right. I have to say, unlike any other department, really, the police department itemizes. They can tell you exactly what their cuts are down to 240 for this. And, you know, I mean, it's very, very specific. Um, but when I had a conversation with the chief, it was the overtime that was really their concern. That's for backup.
That will be.
Yeah.
Well, I think the reality is, it's police, fire, public works, that's where the mic is.
Parking, yeah.
Is it okay to ask about one of some other departments?
Sure.
We, are the registrar voters.
So the registrar voters, um, the reduction we took was one primary.
Well, I'm just looking, I guess we did, you know, anyway, I'm just looking at the part-time poll worker salaries. That in our current budget are 56,000 and we've been through the 14 days already.
But it wasn't budgeted in, in this current year. We didn't have enough, we're over budgeted in the.
So the 56 is over budgeted?
The 50, yeah, we, we've gone over that 56 already. Mitch can probably talk maybe, I mean, the, the 94, very specific, um, backup for that 94.
Okay, cause I, cause then I thought, and I thought Matt made a good point that, um, two things, they might shorten the in, in-person 14 days to something less. And with the no excuse absentee voting.
Well, no excuse absentee voting is not gonna change the number of.
Cause we still need the number of people there to, to work the poll, the, maybe one less, she said, maybe only one less.
But they might be working fewer hours.
We don't know that. You know, you can cut the budget if you want to for that. But we, at the moment, it's only a maybe.
Okay.
It's only a maybe for the shorter hours.
I mean, I hear a lot about that, but the, the fact that it was so, except for the primary during the general election, so successful that I can't, I, I, I don't see the legislature cutting me, cutting me hours for a general election, for a presidential, maybe well for municipal. I don't know if they'll get into the weeds on that, quite frankly. Uh, the primary was way too long. But the general election, they were busy from the time they opened to the time they closed every day.
And every day.
Yes. Well, we don't have that, and obviously in the upcoming budget, um, but, um.
And the no excuse absentee voting, the burden will fall to the town clerk's office.
It will. Which we, we put a small amount, left a small amount there to cover some overtime if needed. I'm not telling you, you can't make a reduction if that is selectmen's wish, but it is based on what we, the 56 was based, we, you know, that was based on old information for the current, current year. The 94, the 94 is based on what we did in, in fiscal '25.
Okay, and that thing, the stipend, you just codified it and changed. We're gonna move it to salaries.
Right, okay. And then, just one last thing, just to, to reiterate, the, the, the increase in the part-time registrars is, is exacerbated by the fact that last year we had a $10,500 voting grant. We don't have any indication if there'll be anything this year or what will be if there is one. Stop putting an immediate $10,500 hold, kind of like, same kind of way the ARPA did with other budgets.
Miss Stipen, somebody said they voted people within themselves.
The, the Board of Finance, um, has set a table of stipends. A schedule, that's the right word, thank you. A schedule of stipends for the type of work that the registrars do so that, um, they're not, this, the registrars are not setting the amount the Board of Finance has. So.
So each, each one gets another $3,000 food to their salary, addition to their salary.
On this, well, we can maybe bring it, that we, we took out one, um, primary. So the $6,000 is based on the budget. If we have everything that the registrars are budgeting for, the referendums, the primaries, it, the Board of Finance came up with that. They'd have to do all those things in order to get it. They don't just get an extra 6,000. So we have to have a primary before they get money. We have to have a second primary before they get money. You, you know what I mean?
So this 6,000 might not get spent.
It, it's potential of not being spent.
Okay, so it's just not guaranteed, it's just, okay.
No.
All right.
It's a good idea to have it in the budget, but it could be a savings.
I, okay, I understand that a little better.
I'll point out too, I don't, not, I don't want to do this now, but keep in mind for future years, I've brought this point up in past couple of years. We don't have a, it's called contingency normally, right? Which would be all the, we, we've mentioned like six things already that might or might not come to pass. But we're including them. So the other way of doing this would be to have a separate contingency that's got, you know, maybe 75% of the total of those things. And you're hoping that they don't all hit at once. Just some, a different way of doing it. I think we took it out at one time because we were looking for things to.
Right.
Right, at one point there was contingency. It's been a number of years, because I'm not sure I remember budgeting for it, yeah.
Yeah, but we ought to go up. We've got the number in, because we can't assume it's not going to. And, you know, how many of these other things might not ever come up? So we've chosen to do it the way we do it. Uh, we, and we do have to build in, like we were saying before, we have to make sure that our fund balance increases by the required percent of the increase. So it's got, that's gotta come from somewhere, which is an argument in favor of doing what we do.
So the stip, the stipend line is, is part of Mitch's salaries. So that would have a place, you could put it in reserve for personnel. I think the Board of Finance wanted to see it in that budget so that it was transparent, that.
It hadn't been transparent.
It hadn't been transparent, so they wanted to see that. I, I agree, this year might not be the year to, to, to play with that. Um, but, um, it, it was important to them that it was a separate line item and everybody knew what was going on.
Yep, and that, that's there because of the Port of Finance's actions and also because of the, and now it's codified, so it's the, there's a, as, there's a schedule. It isn't based on, well, we worked really hard on this one, so it's gonna cost us more. We worked less on this one. We set based on whether it's a primary, a referendum, or, or a, or a general election. I think that's, I think it's a better way to go and it's, it's transparent and it's, it's out there. And it, it's no longer hidden either. That amount was sort of hidden in the part-time salaries. Now it's out there separate, and I think it should be.
Sounds good.
Economic development, we just said, we said 55,000 full-time.
No, but, uh, but yeah, that's, that's.
Increase hours by six a week?
Yeah.
Five and a half.
Oh, five and a half.
But that didn't make it full-time, did it?
No.
So I'm saying that it's in here as full-time.
Right.
So maybe it's on the line?
Well, the reason we, I haven't made the switch. He, he requested full-time, so it went in as full-time. Do it.
But we.
Right, no, it's on the full-time line. Correct.
Down the full-time line, I didn't move it back into part-time.
We have to move it, yeah, yeah.
I wanna wait, I wanna make sure you guys are all comfortable with this. I've discussed this several times. So I made sure, I just, I just, just made the change where, where it was. I removed the part-time administrative person, so that comes out, so you can see that clearly. Um, if this gets approved as a part-time position, which just sounds like that's where you're headed, uh, I will be moving the economic development director's salary from a full, the full-time line, where I basically have nothing in it.
Yep.
And the same amount will go in at part-time.
I'm just saying it may be official change until.
I was just trying to get things on the sheets to make sure I had reflected what you were looking for, and we can make those changes going forward.
Okay.
Mitch, you know, we don't know the insurance, I know we talked to Ashley on, uh, Friday.
We have no numbers yet, though. We talked to Ashley, she said she gave us some indications, but it was, it was all, you know, you know, it, it sounded good, uh, but don't have any numbers yet compared to what we already budgeted. But I don't have an answer for you that yet, for that yet. Traditionally, we haven't had those numbers until after the board finance acted anyways, I recall.
So I, I just want to know, under the assessors department, that I don't have anything under additional cuts? Because she presented the 5,000 that you guys already took, I did not ask for any more. So it shows zero, but.
Cause it was pre.
Yeah, you guys.
Pre-provided.
Um, tax collector did not provide any additional cuts, but she said, whatever we needed to do, we would, we could, we would do. He knows we're gonna do it anyway. Never heard from natural resources. Here from the golf course.
You didn't hear from the golf course?
No.
Um, at this point. I mean, that, that seems to me to be an area that would have like a little bit more potential discretionary, uh, categories. I appreciate that they've managed to make money since COVID, it's all good, like, solvent.
See, I don't have anything under communication, but I did get something very late on that one. See if I can.
I thought if someone didn't respond, we were gonna just give them. And I, I think we should do that.
I do too. I mean, we have, we should look at it and, you know, um.
Action, don't worry. Good, oh, yeah, good. Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt.
Because that's not fair, I mean, then they don't get any cuts.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to ask.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
Maybe because they're trained, just like everybody else did.
So, um, for everybody, the economic development, I realize I put in, I multiply by 30 hours, that 29 and a half would be a slight decrease in that line, whatever you do.
It's negligible.
Yes. There'll be a difference.
All right, well, I think, I think, I think ground maintenance for golf course is up 35.
And, and, yeah, yeah, I mean, I often, the water usage is there too. It's important to maintain it, and it's easy in, in, in February to sort of say, they're watering too much in August. But I think it'd be interesting to make sure that there's, there is a, because I'm presuming they're paying for that, the line item?
Yes.
As opposed to the drain, there's.
Well, you did, you did hear them talk.
They were looking at filling a well.
Well, that's right, Bob Hartman has been asking that question for a couple of years. Consider doing a well and then tying that in. So they are actually gonna look at that to bust a drill a well, uh, and then tie it into their water distribution system.
I mean, I actually know, uh, you know, residents that have, had had a traditional well and then they got city water and they kept the well alive for yard purposes, which makes sense.
Please.
Is that you? Okay. You're in good company.
The only thing it's connected to is the outside process.
Well, for the, for the four, however many didn't submit, can you just cut the bottom line by 2% and then let them go back and figure out where they want to cut it? We need, we need to cut it specifically.
We got good line items. Give them the option.
I can give them the app, yes, I can.
All right, so, golf is already, I don't know, they got 9,000 in conferences, so. Ground maintenance is the item.
Yeah.
One of 18,000.
I'm trying, I'm trying to see, I didn't ask for something in particular.
They're, they're at, they're negative 23%. That, there's 9,000 in conferences in there, right?
So, uh, in, in there. Budget, I'm trying to see what they have. This year. Something that they were looking at. And if you. If they are, I don't see it in the documentation. For a 2% cut bottom line?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, no, them, but anybody that did not respond.
Well, no, them, but anybody that did not respond.
Eagle doesn't have any additional cuts, but we took a significant amount from there already, so I specifically didn't request more unless you asked for more. So even though it's nothing there, it doesn't mean Pete's not, Pete and I had a conversation, so I know. He said, take what we needed, so we can take. Natural resources, didn't respond. I didn't ask John for more from EDC, because, but I could.
Well, in effect, we're cutting his salary.
Communication did provide, I, I don't have them in here. Buy that forty. I, I got that very late. They, they set me fire and just forgot to send communications, so, but I do, I do have it, so even though it looks like zero town properties, I didn't hear it, so.
Yes. So the natural resources is.
Yep, natural resources, I pulled that out. Human services, I asked them to provide line item detail to make them flat, I did not ask them for additional cuts, but if you're looking for that, you'd have to let me know.
Leave that for round two.
Okay, just let, just, just wanna make sure I'm clear, okay. So I have. One. Two. Three. I have four departments. Plus communication, so I have five altogether. Here we go, here's this spreadsheet, okay, here's communication, see the communication. I'll get communications reductions, cause we keep having them.
All right, so two percent of the golf course budget is about seven thousand dollars, sixty hundred dollars.
Is that what you want, seven thousand?
And make it sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine hundred, okay.
The penalty for not responding.
There's a penalty box for you.
To seven percent, or seven thousand, it's eight, and seven.
Well, let's, like I said, we may not be done yet. And you said the communications.
Yes, I have, yes, I have, I, like I said.
But it's just not in there yet.
I just got it late, I'm trying to plug it in now, see what they did.
Are we gonna do anything with capital? We wanna keep it in.
We've got it.
Right, now I have capital at minus five thousand.
Leave it there.
I, so I just wanna note.
Port of Finance will cut the. Effectively know that they're gonna cut capital.
And speaking of capital, I will note that, um, there was a question regarding the electricity for the new showmobile for the stage. Remember, there was thirteen thousand?
Oh, the lights.
Yeah, so that's for additional lighting, not what you already provided.
Yeah.
So I put it back in.
I thought it was so smart, and I wasn't.
No.
So we paid, we, we paid additional, and then we're, this is additional, additional. So it would be nice to understand the need for the additional, additional.
Um, I see Pam on the line.
Oh, great.
Pam?
Hello?
Hi, Pam.
Hi, Pam.
Hi.
Question, uh, coming up about the, uh, lights, the additional lights for the showmobile.
Right, that's, that was like an additional package for kind of, you know, I, I described it in my memo, um. It's just a entertainment showcase lighting, it's all different special effects. Um, what we have today is just your standard lighting. It's a nice to have.
Okay.
Pam, we're a little confused, though, didn't you come to us and ask for some appropriation for additional lights that we said yes to when you were setting it up? Or, we, this looks like additional, additional, are we, are we incorrect on this?
Yeah, no, that's incorrect, it's, this is ours, we have the standard showmobile. And I came back stating that we didn't get the, you know, the fancy lights, which are, you know, a nice to have, and that was the additional thirteen.
And, and, we also.
Yeah. Thank you.
Pam, um, it, it strikes me as the kind of thing that some of the acts, especially that we bring in over the summer, probably have the ability to. Set up themselves, I mean, it, it seems like they have some pretty sophisticated sound people, and I would imagine lights would be included in that, is that not the case?
No, no, not that I've ever had experience with.
Okay.
Typically, we bring in the sound and the management brings in these bands, but they don't have lighting. Additional lighting.
The bands are responsible for their own sound?
Uh, no, we hire sound. Sometimes, like for instance, some of the more local bands at the beaches, they bring their own sound. But when it comes to the green, it's such a large space that the, the bands would suffer, suffer if they brought their own little small systems there, um, for that many people.
Okay.
Summer concerts are all. Or it's dark, I guess. Can you hear, can you hear her, Pam?
Uh, no.
Yeah, I was talking really loud.
Yeah, I know, I'm kind of thinking out loud. What would be an example of a situation where we would need the special effect lights? I'm just thinking the summer concerts, it's daylight. Um, what?
Well, we do use our lights at night, um, when it gets dusk, I mean, the lights come on. Again, it's a, it's a nice to have. I, I can't stress that enough, we can have the concerts with our standard lighting. So if you're looking for a cut, I mean, it is, it really is a nice to have.
Thank you. Because, Pam, the standard lighting on the new one, on the new stage, is, is better than the standard lighting that was on the one we've been using for the last twenty-five years, right?
Uh, I would have to get back to you on that, I, I would imagine it's, it's pretty much the same.
Same.
Yeah, cause we didn't, we didn't order anything other than the. Showmobile the way it comes.
Okay.
Quick question, um, you know, I was thinking, you know, if your capital had not been, or didn't anticipate fully. Spending your capital allowance for this year, uh, you might be able to pay for it out of, out of, out of, out of that. Um, but I've noticed, and MJ's is probably a question for you, and or Pam. Uh, the original, uh, parking wreck building maintenance budget of ninety-five thousand in capital. And we've got an encumbrance for a hundred thousand, seven hundred. Which is more than the actual budget, do you know what that is?
Hmm, I'm not clear on what you're looking at.
All capital or just their line?
It's just their parks, parking wreck under capital. Uh, their allocation, the original budget's ninety-five thousand, they spent fifty-two. Um. But there's an encumbrance for a hundred thousand, seven hundred. Is that for the, uh, elevator project?
I believe that is correct, are you talking about fiscal twenty-five, Matt?
Yes, yeah, your current budget.
My current budget, gotcha.
All right, we don't have to decide that right now, but I just.
I believe that is.
Might be some excess capital that you could actually pay for.
We're usually like right up onto that, so it's possible, either that we have other funding coming in to cover that, or, you, you know what I mean, so. Capital's usually something we have a pretty good handle on, cause it's specific things as opposed to.
All right. So operation.
Yeah, parking, okay, parking wreck.
We do, we do have an error, I think, on the, uh. The part-time salaries have to go back up to where. The column says one twenty-nine, twenty-five, four eleven, four twenty-three sixty-seven is what I show right now, because. We did cut out a significant amount from what Pam had been working on at the seasonal part-time, however, we had to put back in a significant amount when we cut the full-time. Um, maintainer to go back to a part-time one.
Got it.
Okay, so my, my number just represents cutting the, cutting but not adding back, is that what you're saying?
I think so, yeah.
So what's the bottom line in that line?
Bottom line is right, this one right here, four twenty.
So there's no change to it?
I, I think you and I must have crossed numbers at some point, we have it. Four twenty-three sixty-seven.
You're sure?
That's what I have.
Okay, cause that's fourteen thousand I'm taking out, so.
I know.
All right, it's coming out, sorry, guys. So in communication, it's about twenty thousand, so I, I'm, I'm at. I'm taking out more than, than adding back in, if you're gonna, between communication and, uh, parking wreck?
Where exactly in communication are they taking it from?
Some significant cuts. Everybody on communication line?
Yeah.
I know there are, there are an order of cap numbers that.
That out, but.
Uh, yeah. Well, you need to.
Catalog.
You need to come over to finance then.
Just alphabetical, alphabetical order.
You know, Sandy, you, you can't speak about that, the Dewey Decimal System was, you know.
Yeah.
More, more complicated than you.
I'm not referring to the Dewey Decimal.
But I am.
That's referring to A through Z, that's.
I'm going from one to.
I know, I know.
Turf war, turf war breaks out.
One to ninety-nine.
If you hate the Dewey Decimal System, don't even, don't even look at the Lumberjack system, cause that would make you nuts.
All right, you guys gotta tell me when you're ready, ready?
Ready.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first reduction is in overtime, a reduction of two thousand, seven hundred and eleven, bringing that to one thirty-two, eight forty-three. The next is telephone, a reduction of five thousand, one oh seven, bringing that down to two fifty, two forty-six, two five oh, two four six. Maintenance servants, service contracts, a reduction of two thousand, four ninety-seven, bringing that down to one two two, three five oh. And the next three items, bringing them all to zero.
Office supplies, education. For a total reduction of?
Twenty thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars.
Who's, who, who was in charge of, is there a senior person?
It's fire, fire. It's the chief. I got PC, PC. That's what I said, I, I, that's what I said, I put back fourteen and took out twenty, so.
That's six.
And what was the answer on Pam's thirteen, are we leaving that in? We're taking it out, okay, so that's.
Is that in capital?
It's in capital. You'll see, uh, cause my. I know, pluses and minuses, but, uh, on the twenty-ninth, we took it out, which, because of my function, was a positive thirteen, and the additional cuts, I added it back in. So I'm gonna make that zero, so that's down to one thou, one million, sixty-three thousand, nine twenty-one. So my five thousand dollar approximate cut goes to eighteen thousand. In capital.
At your next general department, we're gonna share with them some news about the, um, grand list. So that they understand it isn't even just, that's on top of what was looking at.
It's one line item.
It's one line item.
Because I have the detail.
Oh, yes.
On the other form.
Okay, no, I understand, so it's thirteen exactly.
Right, I didn't, I don't have the detail there.
Yeah.
But I have it all here when we're ready to do capital, or, or passing this out now.
Now we're not doing. How? Doing it to be realistic. And we came up with a number for town properties in total?
No, we didn't do town properties, um, you only gave me golf. So I, companies are set, golf, you gave me sixty-nine hundred, I have an tax collector, natural resources, and town properties.
Taxary, just, just take it, right?
Yep.
Capital's on here, but I don't have any detail.
It's right here, that's what I said, I didn't.
Sorry.
It's the whole capital plan.
Okay, sorry, got it.
I didn't put it into places.
Got it.
So we're looking at town properties now, to see if we can find two percent.
Well, you give me an number, and I'm gonna have him give me.
Yeah, all right.
I think that's.
Let's, let's not, um, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
So, so MJ, your famous debt service charge.
Yes.
Uh.
Flat.
This year, what, what, what's the next three, four years look like?
Um, we have a significant drop in thirty-one.
So. Six years out.
Yeah, it's a little bit, yeah.
Is it flat between now and then, or?
Yeah, flat, yes, sure.
It's, it's, assuming we continue to get some credits, we can stay flat. If we, if, if we don't receive premium credits over the next few years, then we will have no choice but to bump, to bump that up. Or, but I have, we, we, we have a significant amount set aside in those credits, but if I don't. Re, you know, you know, replenish that, then eventually I'm gonna run out of funds.
So does it take into consideration that we bond every, the, of course, you know, town bonds every two years, and school bonds every year?
It has nothing to do with authorization.
Okay.
You're talking authorization.
Okay.
I could be au, I'm authorized to bond a hundred and thirty-eight million, but I might only need five this year. So, uh, it takes into account another five million dollars in the next year.
In the next year, and what about twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
I'm assuming we're gonna need five million. At, at what I have, but the, so my nu, my numbers, that's where I know I'm gonna be using up those credits.
I think you're answering the question, you're factoring in roughly five million dollars of extra. Debt obligation every year for the next five years until we hit thirty-one, when there's a big drop off.
Correct.
And what is it that drops off that, if you know, specifically?
Oh, yeah, there's a, a couple of bonds that end.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't have it right in front of me, but, so say the principal is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that bond every year. And we, we, we pay it off, boom, that's a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings.
So, so, just so that I say what I'm thinking out loud here, I mean, the, the next obvious significant event that we have, I think, is public work.
Correct.
And that would not be a, a bond obligation for many years.
Correct, right.
Hopefully coming in line with this thirty-one drop.
It is my goal, and I've already had this conversation with Matt, it is my goal for that to hit, hit during that drop.
So even though between then and now, we're gonna be talking about what's gonna happen, and how expensive it's gonna be, and the work that needs to get done, and work might actually start getting done. The bond obligation won't hit for some time after that.
Correct.
Potentially, potentially thirty-one, if you're.
That is my, that, that's, that's my goal.
If your plate spinning is successful.
And it has a lot to do, um, with, you know, how much we have in reserves, because maybe I need six million, but I only bond five, cause you, 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 you know what I mean? So a lot of things play into that number, it is my goal at the moment that we would structure our bonds to hit at that time. For that project.
As always, thank you for looking into a crystal ball. Thank you. You too, for that matter. Easily.
So don't beat me up next time, I go, I don't, no.
Always deeply appreciated. With town properties.
Yep.
Um, I wonder how your rental is going up?
Mm-hmm.
Oh man, that line, they're in.
Everybody's favorite.
Yeah.
Is there a rate increase anticipated for next year? Because. They're currently, is currently at. That doesn't work.
We have addition, there were some additional, um.
But they're currently at what looks like fifty percent expended through December. But they're currently at what looks like fifty percent expended through December. And, so two hundred and forty-five, actually less than that, two hundred and forty-five against a five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar budget.
I, I have, I have all the detail behind it, unfortunately, I, I have my personal, I'm not hooked up to the, to the. Can you let Steve and I work on this, and if it can be fire hydrants, it'll be fire hydrants, um, so. If you have a.
Yeah, he, he had already taken some pretty good, in his budget. He had already written down utilities by fifteen thousand. Streetlight maintenance by three thousand. And repairing maintenance by fifty-six hundred, so. This looks like he did a pretty decent job on his budget, he's taken out. No, streetlight, I'm sorry, streetlining is reverse, streetlining is i- in addition, so, he had about, he had about. Yeah, looking at about twenty and then three, that was streetlight maintenance, not like, okay, so eighteen. Twenty-four thousand, he had cut out of line as which. I think it's pretty good.
So we're looking for another twenty-three, twenty-three thousand thou- thousand from him, or what?
So, let's do about ten, let's do one percent in addition, see what it looks like.
Natural resources.
Tree driven.
Darlene, are you on? Darlene, can you look in the carried-in force spreadsheet and see i- if there's any money in there for tree maintenance, I think there was some at one point.
I'll take a look.
Thank you. We had set aside somewhat, you know, during some of the COVID years, you know, uh. There were a couple of years that we didn't go out chopping down trees, or, and so we set that money aside. For, because we know tree maintenance is always a big dollar amount, um, so. Darlene will check our records, and I believe I have some money locked in there.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
It looks like we have about twenty-five thousand dollars for tree maintenance in carried-in force from last fiscal year. The other thing I wanted to mention to you in regards to public works is now doing a lot of the tree maintenance. For Kevin, so you might wanna take that into consideration as well.
Yeah, I think he did with his budget request, it didn't go up because of that, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
So yes, I have twenty-five thousand set aside in carried-in force that we could use to supplement this.
We'll worry about the whole next year.
Yes.
Does that translate into, I, I, I can't think fast enough, so that translates to about two percent, twenty-five thousand?
We take half of that, leave ourselves.
Even more, yeah.
The tree maintenance. He's at forty-three percent, forty-three percent, so.
Yeah, he's, he's about right, cause the, the spring is coming, so that's, yeah. We slow down at the moment, and then pick up again in the spring. Okay, took twelve-five.
What else you got?
Just, what, something in for the tax collector? Like four thousand dollars, I don't know where we're gonna take that from. Well, I'm concerned about the education and training, I'm not sure if that's required education and training, you know?
She's got a.
Some new people.
That, well, that staff has been in there for a while.
Takes like three years or so to go through all the training, it's not, you know, it's not something you go to a training and you're done. If, if you just tell me what you want from tax collector, it's like four thousand, you wanna take two thousand? Or, for nothing, or what? Nothing it is. Nothing it is.
Yeah, I don't know. That's my favorite. That's not how we're evaluating, cause otherwise.
Hello, I'd be second. Just plugging the number in anywhere without, uh, worrying about, there it is, okay. Three point four seven.
Where we started. No doubt. We were originally talking about getting under four.
I mean, that sounds great to me, I was kinda hoping we could get this back a little bit at overtime.
Yeah, that, that concerns me.
Want me to give them back the nine that they asked for, and see what your number is? Let me give them back, they asked for the nine, they asked for nine, so, not all of it. Brings me to three point four nine. Three point four nine, it almost sounds like we did that on purpose, but we didn't.
With the police restoring the nine.
Giving them the nine thousand that they requested back.
Call that good budgeting. Which will have an incremental bump up on the overall tax increase, is that right? We're gonna, we're gonna talk about the assumed collection rate. Okay. Cause we can move, we can move that side of the needle, uh, which mitigates the. That we have an awful lot of taxpayer money sitting on the sidelines, and in, you know, times. Hard times, we need to take advantage of all the tools we can. So, gotta remember that when we have a. It is a conservative collection rate based on our historical.
So we're gonna make it.
There are a lot of variables to the adjustments that we made. I already have, um, I asked Becky Friday, so I have all of the court cases, I know with those. Cause I make adjustments for potential of those, um, but, you know, so there's a lot of things.
We're in pretty good shape.
We're in pretty good shape.
Which Becky's number does not accommodate.
Right.
So, after MJ gets done with her adjustments, that's, and that number might not be made.
Listen, yep, yeah, like I said, I did, it, it was too late Friday, from the, get ready for today.
Yeah, so, so if you wanna run the numbers, uh, with our current assumption rate for the collection. Then with a modified assumption rate. We know where the board, what's the board of that number, it's still?
Yeah, cause they said, I don't know what they finalized, but at the medical meeting, they said, well, we're just gonna send things the way they are. So, I don't know if that meant everything, or just the medical, or, so, I don't know, I haven't heard. Haven't gotten any new numbers from Linda, I'll put it that way.
And their number was six point.
It was over six.
I think we've made a case that we did some, we did some work.
Yeah, you guys, and I, cause I have a total here, hold on, I can tell you what you cut from the departments. You've cut one point one six five from the department requests.
That is significant.
It's three point four nine.
That's what I got.
And then.
We'll verify, you know, we're gonna have to verify. You know, you.
You're doing this on the fly.
Cause Mitch is already saying, oh, I have a different number than you for the police, it's a seven thousand dollar difference, but, you know, so we're gonna have to, we just got a couple of things to make sure. Um, I think he's probably went to go.
It's a pretty righteous place to end up, and, and before we finish. Before we send it off. No, it's, actually, net new employees is one, right, cause we have two in there, we have two, we have, we have two, we've got. Two permit tech, then we've got the.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Permit tech, and the dispatcher, we're going down one in the assessor's office, down. Waste transfer, okay, right, just, so that's, that's a net zero, and we're adding half a year. But it's really a full-time, it's a full-time, but for half a year.
You're including waste transfer? You're including waste transfer?
They're, they're listed as employee, right, when you take a look at the total number of employees, regardless of how we pay for it, it's, we're down an employee. And actually, we're gonna take red for it, because we're down an employee because of the program we put in place. So, so that, so that's in, alright. Board of finance, they wax us, those, those positions are, they're, they're, they're the first, they're the first back on the list. Yeah, well, it works out to be a net half budgetarily, but it's a plus one full-time position, but we're only. We're not hiring them till halfway through the year, so.
Is that the mechanic?
Yes.
So it'll be a, a new permit.
You know, again, we've got some, we've got some. Permit tech, cause it's turned into a part-time position.
I mentioned that to you. As, as you do, I, I, I have all that, I have all that detail, right here.
Alright, should we tackle capital?
I'm sorry, what?
I can't find a page for you, the family services. So when I looked the first time, I thought it looked like in the additional department, that they added something in for free salaries, I just looked quickly and I thought.
Oh, because it's positive numbers, but my function does minus, so.
Additional, yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, okay.
And so, and just, and just so you know, um.
Wait, explain that again?
My function of revise is subtraction, so, you don't add the numbers, you subtract the numbers.
And when I flipped through, I thought it was.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's just easier for me to plug the numbers in without a minus, yeah.
And what are the contracted services?
So, yep, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what that is, so, um, we've done a couple of things, um, so we've reviewed the opioid one more time. We, the eight thousand four, I don't know. Probably Mitch doesn't know this either. So, um, we, you have the family, so we are, there's eight thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, for the prevention coordinators that we have determined could be moved to the opioid grant. So, we, we can't, so the, we can't just say Lynn's the person in charge, so we're gonna. Say some of her salary is opioid, the opioid grant, that they don't allow. But she identified a certain amount of hours, the prevention coordinator, that is opioid related, that we are gonna transfer to the grant. Okay?
With the title of prevention coordinator, feels like a great.
Correct, so that's that, um, then the four thousand, um, she says. The only other place I can reasonably reduce the budget with minor harm is to reduce the contractual line item by four thousand dollars. Um, and that is just a, a flat reduction.
She's, she's currently.
So, so just so you know, she, she only wanted eight thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, but she identified eight thousand four twenty-five plus the four. So I took both, cause she only gave me one percent and you asked for two. So.
And so is that three point four six percent, there, her current?
Yes.
Increase, that's the, that, that of all this.
Net of all that. So she's taken the full, so I've taken the full eighty-four, plus the four.
Right, and that three point four six is largely the result of the loss of.
Yes, she had over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funding each year, it's, this year was half, but, yeah, um, you know, we, we. Addition, a significant amount of the ARPA funding went to you, the family services.
Good with the four thousand out of the contracted services.
And the eighty-four.
She, she has a budget of basically seventy. She's got fifty-four still left in encumbrance. So, it's only actually spent seven, a little over seventeen now, there may be some stuff in arrears, but.
Any other questions on any other departments? So we're gonna take them all, huh?
Where do you, where, where do you think?
I just have to be the one to go back and tell the departments.
Well, do you, do you, I mean, you asked them to, to produce some more costs, which you did, do you think that you're gonna come back and say you don't have to do this?
Well, I was hopeful that some of them I didn't have to, but, you know, asking for them and taking them are two different things, so.
First step is the identification step.
And if any, any of those things are needed next year, just puts you in a hole, same, same hole.
Although this has been a multi, multi-year process.
What is it, just the assessment?
Methodology, no longer use the book value, they use. With an initiation schedule, five percent per year, I think it's five percent, you know, well, year one, it starts at eighty or eighty-five. Cause you lose twenty percent of your car when you drive it off the lot, um, so, it's, it is a, it's a. Basically, it's writing it down, um, over a twenty-year period with a value-based car, and it starts with. I mean, all this is processed to just, to, to kind of ease the burden on the cities, where it hits hard. Yeah, I'm gonna. I'm gonna find out whether or not there's gonna be some relief there, too, cause there may be, there may be something, uh, coming, uh. Budget comes out Wednesday, I think, is it Wednesday? And, but, the governor's budget's not gonna help us as much as it may help prevent the ECS formula not being reduced. To the degree that it was scheduled to be reduced a couple of years ago, but also the thing that we've been pounding, and I actually talked about this. I was one of the people that talked about it directly with the governor in his office after opening day. Because, you know, we, the, the last bill that was passed relative excess cost. Put a socioeconomic weighting on the thing, so, you know. More distressed communities get a higher percentage of the, of their, their, their cost funded. My contention, and that of several others, is that is not a discretionary thing, that a wealthy community can decide to do versus, uh, the non-wealthy community decided to do. It's not like we can, you know, we can offer, you know, foreign, foreign languages versus whatever, okay, so I understand the, how ECS works appropriately. But we're all buying from the same services, when we send a kid out, wherever it is, it's the same price as when New Haven sends a kid out. So, it should be, should be, it should be the same, the baseline should be the same, that we should get a reimbursement, uh, consistent with, with the others, but. Sometimes you feel like I'm barking at the moon, though.
Yeah, and I, and I took one of the revenue lines from the state out at zero, because the state told us we were gonna get over four hundred thousand dollars, but when the time came to actually divvy out the revenue, we got zero. So I kept at zero this year, they might tell us we're getting it again, but.
Why don't we, why don't we have a conversation with Matt Rettig, when I do that, setting your.
Okay, yeah, so I, based, based on this year's budget, I made adjustments to next year's budget. Because I, I'd rather come in, I'd rather, you know.
Yeah, realistic.
Right, because right now I have a, you know, a hole there, so I didn't want to have the same hole two years in a row. We get something, that's fine, but this year they were like, sorry, we didn't have any money to give you.
Okay, capital?
Ready for capitals?
So this capital spreadsheet is broken out by how we're funding. Not, not alphabetical by. I know, and there are, no, no, there are only two funding sources that you really need to look, you can look at them all, I'm not telling you can't, but there's two funding sources that are, um, important to look at. The first is at the very top, bonding, so I, I just want to explain what I did there, I kind of explained it a little bit last year, I mean, last week. So I have moved some items into bonding, um, for twenty-six. And I've also, the three items from twenty-seven, I've also included in that column that reads proposed one twenty-nine, twenty-five. Um, because we typically authorize two years. So, things that I did not include, the police headquarters, the mooring project, but I added that in, because I believe somebody here asked me to put that in, so that's there, right? That you asked, you guys asked for that last time, um, and obviously the, the new maintenance facility for, uh, DPW, so those three items. I have excluded from the proposal for this year, so if any of those items are gonna make the cut for this year. To, to, at the time that we approve the budget, you know, I, I don't know if you're doing them, or do them separately or together, but anyway, that, that's, that's the reasoning. For the two point five three bottom line proposal there. See that total bonding number?
But those, a lot of those things are also in the twenty-seven column, because it should be the same amount for two years, it's two year project.
No, that, they're in italic, they're italicized because they're, I've moved them to twenty-five, I, I've moved them to twenty-six. So that four, so the library HVAC was requested for fiscal year twenty-seven, but we won't be going out for authorization in twenty, in next year, so I. Put it in this year, so that middle column includes the two years.
So there's no column that's just. Our.
This year?
Yeah, or, this is what we're doing next year, it's a little bit of this and a little bit of that.
Theoretically.
Correct, it's minus, it's minus one point one eight, two point two five minus the one point one eight in, in twenty-seven is what you're doing for twenty-six. So twenty-six includes five hundred thousand in road improvement, a hundred and one for the replacement of motors, a hundred and fifteen for the parking lot at Bitner. Ninety-nine for the mobile column vehicle lifts, and two hundred and fifty thousand for the ambulance remount. Those are the ones that are for twenty twenty-six, and then the three that you see in twenty-seven, it, HVAC for the library, windows in the community center, and additional road improvement, because we do five hundred every year for that. Those two things together equal the two point two five.
All right, so, so really, we should have the police headquarters, the, the mooring property, it's really.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were doing, including them as part of the one big bonding authorization, or if you had plans to do otherwise, so that's, that's why.
But we're not gonna be voting on those in April.
Right, so that's what you, yeah, yes. So it is.
So I only included things I thought you were gonna include as part of your budget package.
I think we should have a column for each year and have the projects that are gonna be done in those years, and so that, and that, because we're voting on the capital plan.
Yeah, and, and the capital plan won't have this proposed, I did this to try to make it simplistic for us, but I guess I didn't.
Well, I think all we, all we have to do is basically move police headquarters, purchase a mooring property, and construction and maintenance facility out to, as yet to be determined, right? Because those are, so, you know, a TBD column, right? Uh, or put it in twenty-eight or twenty-nine, uh, because we're only bonding for the, for the, the next two years. So, you know, maybe we put it, like I said, twenty-eight or twenty-nine, although I think we've talked earlier that. I don't, I don't, I think we're all out of our minds if we try to go get a thirty million dollar DPW facility built in the next, you know, approved in the next two years.
I didn't move anything, this is how it was presented, you know, so that's why we're having this discussion now, I can easily make those adjustments. So is the consensus to move those three items to fiscal twenty-eight, and then that takes them out of that equation, yes or no?
Well, we are expecting, the, this board is expecting to make the purchase of the mooring property in the coming fiscal year, I mean, I realize it's not voted on. But I would say put that into the twenty-five, twenty-six column.
Okay, that, that would get later, but we're only going to the voters.
Right, but for budget, for the budget, we're not including that in our authorization.
Well, well, correct. Right, right, exactly, that's a separate thing.
Correct, so I was trying to come up with your budget, that, that's where that two point two five is the, so I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move the police headquarters to twenty-eight. Make that zero in twenty-six. I'll leave the mooring project in twenty-six, and I'm gonna move.
I thought the police project was more, that they needed those new lockers and everything.
They're not, they're not ready to put it on for a, a bonding question now.
Okay. All right.
They, they haven't even, they haven't even selected.
That's right, okay, so, all right.
So if my math is right, it's one one eight seven, one forty-seven, FY twenty-seven, and then one zero six six.
One seven one.
One seven one, or twenty-six. But, but that number, you might want to put that in percents underneath the forty, you know, the forty's. Basically, four thou, four million, zero six six one seven one, because the three million is.
So, so right now, that's what it is.
Maybe below that in percents or something. Or, not percents even, just. All right, we're good on the bonding package?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure I am, I, I just, I'm confused. So in the two thousand twenty-six column, we're gonna have the half a million road improvements that we always have. Um, that group of three items, the one oh one, one fifteen ninety-nine.
Yeah.
Two fifty ambulance remount, but, and, and the mooring property, we're saying we're not gonna have it in the twenty-five column, this is not for bond authorization purposes, this is just our capital plan.
This is our capital.
I have the three million dollars for the mooring project still in twenty-six.
Okay.
For a total of four million oh sixty-six one seventy-seven, but the.
But the questions of the voters will be.
For one million oh sixty-six one seventy-one.
Okay.
Plus the one million.
Plus the one million eight equals the two two five three.
Yep.
And, and, and to, to go back to where I think we started at the beginning, when I, and Matt was explaining where we are with what's gonna happen at town meeting. The three million dollars, since it's already part of an authorized bond for land acquisition, will not show up on a referral, if it gets passed at this town meeting, this is the.
Goes forward, it's already been approved, because it's part of the ten million dollar authorization, already approved at town, by the voters.
And, and what actually ends up getting sent out for bonding will be affected by what we get in grants, at some undetermined moment in the future, so that could be.
Right.
Could be.
Zero.
Three million, it could be two million, it could be one, it could be less, depending on how urgent the federal and state agencies are.
Correct.
Get this property off of their flood risk concern.
But at the, but, uh, the approval of the three million dollars will hold three out of a ten, until such time those grants come forward.
Excellent.
And I have to be authorized to spend three million, regardless of how the money comes in, bonding, grants, one of you making a private donation.
So in a way, it's its own separate category.
Yeah.
It's not bonding, it's, it's land acquisition fund, bonding, and grants.
But it is, but it is bonding, it, the expenditure is going to come out of bonding. And will be, bonding will be reimbursed by other funds.
Yes, yeah, but it's its own bonding.
So from the accounting, the accounting.
It's separate from what we're going to the budget for, yes.
So the actual vote next week, the, the task people have already voted to set aside ten million for land acquisition, but the actual vote next week, if it's, if it's, uh, goes favorably. Um, they're voting to spend this particular amount on a particular thing.
Yes. All right, so, so we're good to move forward with the two point two five three bond authorization question?
Yep.
Okey dokey, I thought that was gonna be an easy one, okay.
It ultimately was.
I know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just teasing, I, it wasn't gonna get. Okay, so similarly, down below, you'll see, um, under FY twenty twenty-six is how the, um, requests came in. And under proposed one twenty-nine, twenty-five, um, are the changes that I've made based on conversations with department heads. Let's see, I gotta take that thirteen million out, that's still in here, I think, so we're taking that thirteen out for that extra. Um, so if I take the park, the thirteen thousand out for that park lighting, I'm at one million fifty-eight thousand nine thirty-four. Which is a decrease of seventeen thousand nine eighty-seven from the current year. And the, the changes, the cuts, whatever you want to call them, are all based on conversations with department heads. Zero, yeah, we, we didn't zero anything out just because we wanted to, so if there's anything else there that you might necessarily not agree with, now would be the time.
Just wanted to follow up on the question, if, if Pam is still on.
Pam?
Pam, you there? All right, no, maybe you had a chance to ask about the, um, the.
I'm here.
Oh, yes, I did.
The playscape at the community center, is that except, that's available to the public when the preschool is not?
Yes.
Can they access it from, access it from the outside, or do they have to go in the building and go out?
No, they can access it from the outside.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize, I did speak to Pam about that last week.
Thank you.
Too many conversations in one day.
It's a number. And then, and you gave them the option to prioritize some of their.
Correct, as if you remember, um, chairman of the fire commission.
Yep.
Presented, um, and I, I did speak to the deputy chief about the reductions that were made there, and they were okay with that. Spoke to Pam about some things. The, there are three, the, the three things, there were the three bottom priorities. I took out their three bottom priorities. Based on what they provided to us, the other items, uh, I just couldn't see taking it, we, we have to pay the fifth payment out of five lease payments for the machine. One was the remount, I moved that to bonding, because that's where we typically do that, and I forget what the third one was, but, oh, I think I moved it to bonding as well, it was the, um, motors. Yeah, so, so they got the things that they really, really felt they needed, plus the one that we really needed to pay, and I took out the three that they felt, um, that they were fond of kicking those out. I guess it's the bottom three priorities.
All right, and the police, uh, move the fixed license plate reader system, okay? And then the public works mobile columns for vehicle lifts, uh, are they moving that to twenty twenty-seven, or are they just taking it out entirely?
Uh, the mobile columns, no, I moved, that's in your bonding.
Oh, that's bonding, that's, that's, I forgot.
So the Marine ten motors in bonding, it's lasts long enough to be appropriate for bonding? I don't know much about it, but.
Yes, uh, we, when I do the bonding, we look at the life cycle of everything that's there, and we, and everything is assessed separately. So, it's probably gonna be the lesser amount, but we do anything from ten to twenty years.
Okay.
So.
And aren't they, didn't they indicate that there's an opportunity to get some funding for that, because Ray Ten is a shared resource amongst the, uh.
Okay.
Couple of communities, I remember there was something about that grant money for that.
Okay, so that, that would, uh, just like the mooring project, those grant funds would go back into, into the bond and reduce the amount that we have to actually bond.
Yes.
And we can go over anything on this list, but those are the two, those are the two funding sources that are, um, you know, necessary for you to approve, but we can certainly talk about anything on it.
One million fifty-eight nine forty-three is what you said is.
Yes, the total, the general control.
General control.
Yep.
All right, we were, just wanted to have a quick comment about the committed fund balance stuff, just, just what we had. Agreed to move out of.
Right, so the.
Reserve accounts, or reserve accounts, which were built specifically for these kind of purposes.
The one thing I moved into there, um, that we had originally thought of is the master park plan, but I thought that was an appropriate use of that funding as well. But it was not originally bonded, funded.
Working, we're working with, uh, council of governments on that, uh, one commercial corridor master plan, uh, to be funded from, uh, council of governments, so. Just means we don't have to draw that on.
Correct, right now the money's just set aside for, but we, that would cover the park, our master plan. Anything else?
I'm good. You wanna authorize, uh, you wanna, you wanna have one more meeting to cover this, I know you guys probably want to get it done, right?
Good to see it.
A final?
Laid out, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then do a.
Yeah.
That'll be ideal.
All right.
What'd you say? Oh, Zoom, oh. Yeah, because Mitch and I will just double, double check some of the, the figures to make sure that, because we were looking to make fit into, fit into his salary schedules, we didn't want to. Mitch and I talked about it on Friday, and I, I'll say it was my decision not to have Mitch change all of his salary spreadsheets, because we weren't sure, it's a lot of work for him to do. because we weren't sure, it's a lot of work for him to do, so.
It's just a case of changing, changing back, and we just, we wait until, some of the things were obvious, we've already, you've already made those decisions, those I made those changes. Some of the ones coming up today, you just kind of held off until you made the decision that I made those.
Save us a little work at four o'clock on Friday.
We had held the window already.
I don't think we did. We had for thirty-first a long time ago, but that's, first of all, it's passed, and secondly, we had crushed it out anyways.
I'm thinking this week, right?
Yeah.
It's Friday?
Uh, when, when do we have to put it in the paper? We don't have to put it in the paper for the board of finance presentation.
Correct, not for the board of finance, right.
But we do it after the board, after the board.
Um, well, Friday we have G E A.
It's Zoom.
Wednesday.
When can you be ready?
Wednesday, I can't do Wednesday.
The only day that's bad for, well, I guess I don't have to go, I have my G F O A conference on the sixth, and it might be the last one I go to, no?
How about the, how about the, how about the fifth, Wednesday? I can't do the fifth.
And tomorrow's too soon, right?
Yeah, Thursday.
It's not a lot, we could, we could probably be ready for.
My, my stuff I'll do today, I'll do this afternoon.
Do you have a special meeting already tomorrow? Why do I have something on my calendar from Tracy?
I have a nine-thirty, and then.
Yeah.
You know, just for work, and my business is just, Thursday is the good day.
I mean, this is a summary.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had a conference, I'm sorry.
If it does.
If it's on Zoom, I can just Zoom from my conference.
Well, you said you could have, if he's gonna do it this afternoon, you said you could have it for tomorrow, do it at eight-thirty tomorrow morning, you definitely.
But maybe, maybe you can't do it by eight-thirty tomorrow.
I can do it on Zoom, yes, well, cause, yeah, I can do it on Zoom, cause tomorrow I, I work from home, so I could do it on Zoom.
I could do eight-thirty as well.
We can't, we, we don't have enough time to post it for eight-thirty tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, there's that, thanks Tracy.
But you would have time to post it for the afternoon?
Would you have time to post it for the afternoon?
Yeah.
So Tracy, why do I have a meeting tomorrow from you? Is that, was that something canceled that I just haven't taken at all?
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Okay, well, you know what, I can easily delete.
Well, but they're already posted, they were all set.
No, it's not.
I'm gonna hit decline, that goes off of my thing, I don't know what, what it was, but.
Four o'clock tomorrow?
Does that give Tracy enough time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four o'clock tomorrow.
No.
I'm not sure, I have a dentist appointment, I didn't fill my calendar, I don't know. I'm trying, sorry, I'm trying to find it right now. Sorry.
Are you pretty sure it's tomorrow?
Pretty sure it's the, um, fourth, yes. I think it's the fourth.
Fourth, September.
Yeah, and I know it's not first thing, I, I know it's not first thing in the morning, it's probably not at the end of the day. So I'd say, ignore me and go, it's for the rescue, and I'll, you know.
So, so Sue will zoom in with the.
Excuse me, doctor, I need to zoom in, I need to zoom into a meeting.
What you call it, that's just, we got, we got a couple minutes, right?
Yeah. Okay, alright.
Um, can I take this break here to try and understand a little bit better? What, what I gotta do to solve this, I mean, Board PAC seems to be working, but except I'm still literally talking on this, which is so weird.
Tracy, can you come in here for a minute?
The iPad, the iPad. I got in on my, I got in on my personal machine.
Is there any specific, is there any specific format you would prefer better than what I've provided?
I think the, just the old way with a column for each year. Would mean it could be easier, but.
Well, eventually I have to, yeah, I, I was trying to show you the progression so you could see what you'd already done, and you, you know, that's why, that, that's why I did this, you see?
I think we, do we, do we need that, do we only need to see the progression, or are we?
If you're good, then I can just give you where we are this year.
So, so capital, I get it once you've explained it, if I'd looked at this capital without translation, I would have been a little flummoxed by the six and a half.
I, I don't. I don't know why, I knew exactly what I was doing.
And you made it clear once you did tell us, but it looked like those, which was kind of, if I hadn't had the conversation with you earlier today, that there's a big difference between all three, so again, I know it's easy to say, more columns, and it makes life, maybe that makes it more complicated, but other people are gonna be looking at this and saying, see, we're on the hook next year for thirty million dollars, not the case. So somehow, asterisk, kind of some way of communicating that to the public, which people, people are entitled to, and it would be super, very helpful for us.
We moved the six point five in the thirty already to twenty-eight.
Original one came out at P M.
Oh, it was, okay.
The original notice for the meeting, that this meeting came out at nine-thirty P M.
Today? We're just all such technicalism.
So you accepted it on your calendar, you were here already, but I noticed it, cause I was going to have the second meeting, I said to my calendar, I said, why isn't it there? Way below, it was down at thirty P M. He's gonna vote on this new meeting and.
Got it, knocked on the door, popped his head in there, that was, that was my best man.
Oh.
One of my closest friends, still. He lives in Chester, but he was like, he was probably coming from.
We're still under recording, so just so you know.
Alright, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Do you want to, do you want to vote in the meeting?
Yes.
If they'll vote on that four P M.
So we are having a four.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Set a special board of the second meeting for, uh, Tuesday, um, February fourth at four P M to, uh, discuss and recommend the budget to submit to the board.
Budget and capital.
But budget and, operating budget and capital budget, uh, for submission to the board of finance.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Let me try your minds on it, favor. I, I have a motion carries, thank you, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.